Here we go. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the April 1st, 2013 City Council Meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
We have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own.
We will have executive session tonight, and it will cover real estate negotiations, settlement of claims, and pending litigation. We will go into executive session following Alderman's time. Mayor's comments. First, I would like to give out a couple of awards to some of our local businesses. Last year, I had announced a program that we wanted to do called the Waukegan Premier Business Award. What we're doing is, we're giving a kind of a, something they can put up on the wall in their businesses, as well as a certain percentage of the business license, or up to $250. And we're very honored tonight that what we did was, we looked at both medium and small businesses. And in the small business category, Jerry's Tacos on Genesee Street has been awarded a certificate of appreciation and $250 towards reimbursing the cost of their business license. Unfortunately, Nettie and Jerry could not attend tonight, so I will take the certificate there for them tomorrow, so that they can display it in their restaurant. In the medium-to-large category, the award goes to North Shore Printers. Both of these businesses have been chosen due to their dedication of the education of the children of Waukegan. Nettie and Jerry from Jerry's Tacos have supported a wide variety of activities and provided reading and classroom materials for teachers in the community. Charlotte Callahan, representing North Shore Printers, has been crucial in fundraising efforts for the Waukegan Bulldog sports teams and other student-related activities in Waukegan High School. It is my pleasure and honor to present both recipients with certificates of recognition and the honorary of $250. And I told Charlotte I ran out of checks today, so I will get her a check tomorrow. But Charlotte, could you come up front, please?
(inaudible).
You don't want to photo bomb us, please, sir? One more, please.
North Shore Printers is proud to be celebrating our 80th year in business in Waukegan, and we're proud to be a Waukegan member.
Thank you very much. Anybody who's involved with District 60 knows that North Shore Printers really puts in a lot of effort to make their events successful and to make sure that the sports team have the support that they need, but also other programs. So I was very happy to be able to give out the award. There's something that I'd like to do, and I'm calling it team recognition. You know, we often go without recognizing the day-to-day accomplishments of our employees. And tonight, I would like to remind the people of Waukegan of the great accomplishments of the people who work so hard day-to-day in City Hall. Four years ago, I came into office and inherited an organization that was teetering on the edge of bankruptcy. The city was lucky that we were able to hire one of the best CFOs in the field, Tina Smigelski. She was able to quickly stabilize the situation by identifying the crucial problems and applying professional and responsible solutions. Her team removed the old auditors and replaced them with one of the top firms in the region. The audits, left undone by the previous administration, were completed thanks to the hard work of her staff. Our debt situation was stabilized and restructured, which enabled the city to reap generous savings. She has continued to keep the financial direction of the city on track, despite some of the worst economic times we have ever experienced. The city of Waukegan owes a debt of gratitude to the entire finance department, because without Tina and her compatriots, this ship would have sunk long ago. So thank you very much for all your work, Tina. We sure appreciate it, and everybody in your department. Thank you, everybody. Now, there's something that I feel everybody needs to know about our ability to maintain our streets and sidewalks. Those of you who may have been at the meetings where we were adopting the levy may know that the corporate levy was left off. Now, that means that the city of Waukegan will not be able to do any street repair, any sidewalk repair, any capital improvements, or work of any kind, without borrowing money. So I want to warn everybody in advance. The potholes you're hitting now, the sidewalk cracks that you see, the other problems in the city infrastructure are only going to get worse. We'll do our best to keep up with them. We may be able to borrow money, possibly do bonds. We'll see what the will of the City Council is at the time. But I am concerned, because I drive the same streets you do, and I'm hitting the same potholes that you do. And it's getting bad. And I don't see how we're going to be able to smooth our way out of this, given the current situation. I did talk to our Public Works Director about how are we going to deal with this. One of the things that he said is that instead of using blacktop or cement, that we'll probably put gravel in some of the potholes, just to fill them in, to be able to hold over until we can either get the money we need, either by loans, or possibly through motor fuel tax, or we are looking through our lobbyists for any other types of funding that's available by the state or the federal government, to be able to keep our roads in repair. It's not something that I endorsed. I felt it was a mistake to leave the corporate levy off. But it is what we're faced with now. So I promise you this: We will do the best with what we have, but it's not going to be perfect. It's going to be rough, and depending on what the weather's like, it could even get worse. So please have patience with us. We are doing the best we can with the resources that were given to us to work with. But again, if you call and complain about the conditions of the streets in your neighborhoods, we're going to tell you exactly what I'm telling you tonight, so that everybody knows the reason behind it. And the best thing that you can probably do is to work with your Alderman in your ward to identify the worst areas that you have in your streets, and let us know what those are, so that we can give those the most amount of attention that we can afford to. That concludes the Mayor's comments. We will now go into audience time. And I do want to remind everybody, and I'm going to start the stop clock here, that we are going to hold everybody to three minutes. And at three minutes, I will advise you that the time is up, and ask you then to please step away from the podium. So first off, we have Jane Waller.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jane Waller, 2108 Ash Street in Waukegan, and I am pleased to be here tonight to be the bearer of good news. As you might know, I headed up the Capitol Campaign to raise money from the community for the Art Space project that's at the old Karcher Hotel, just down the street from here. And I have been notified by the local manager of the project that the project is almost completely leased up. Out of the 36 live-work units, only one is left. Thirty-three tenants have moved in, two more are awaiting the date for move-in, and so that leaves just one more unit to fill. That means that we now have visual artists, musicians, actors, photographers, a jewelry maker, and a furniture maker, to name just a few, who are now living in our downtown. This Karcher is now alive with artists, and creativity is in the air. I think this is huge for Waukegan. An old historic building at the gateway of our downtown district has been repurposed and refurnished. It is now home to young, creative, vibrant people who are a part of our growing art district. This is a $14 million project, made possible by a combination of federal, state, local, and private funding, and charitable contributions from the community, and a lot of support from the community. And there are many people that I want to thank for the success of this project. First, of course, to Art Space for recognizing the potential in our town and making the commitment to Waukegan. Second, thanks to our city leaders, who have the vision and political will to support the project by committing staff and funding to the project. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the City Council. Third, thanks to the county and state leaders who have supported the project and worked to secure key funding for the project. And a final thanks to the members of the Waukegan community, individuals and businesses who saw the promise and support of the vision of the Art Space Loft. A special thanks to the Waukegan Park District, and to Main Street, Waukegan Main Street in general. And a specific thanks to Teddy Anderson, who, when she was Executive Director of the Main Street, brought the idea to Waukegan and began the long-term effort to develop the partnerships needed to make this project a reality. As Margaret Mead said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Waukegan is changing, and that's in large measure, thanks to many wonderful, committed citizens of our town.
Thank you. Okay. Next is, I'm going to do my best with this, Raekwon Bacon.
I just wanted to say, last time I was here, like, Mr. Beedling, like, we were, like, when Brother Blanks was done talking, he told us not to clap, and like, when Mr. Wa, when Molly Sun went up there and got an award, he was clapping, they were all clapping, and he said nothing about it. So that's what I wanted to say.
Raekwon, could you do us a favor, please? Give us your full name and your address.
My name is Raekwon Bacon. I live at 713 Wasworth.
Say that one more time.
My name is Raekwon Bacon. I live at 713 Wasworth.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Applaud. Go ahead. Next, we have Darian Flowers. And Mr. Flowers, please, your name and address, if you would.
Darian Flowers, 10 Linnox. This is based on the same thing. I guess I want to know why every time we come up here, you always say no applause. But when other people come, it's fine for them, just applause. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Christopher Blanks. Name and address, please, sir.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and National Action Network of Lake County. First and foremost, I want to compliment and commend my young students over there. You did an outstanding job at speaking up for yourself. And let this be the first day of the rest of your life, that you speak up for yourselves in your community when you feel you see something that is wrong. So you did an excellent job. Next, I want to take the time, and I want to think, take the time to thank those Aldermen last week, who voted in the best interest of keeping working, tax-paying citizens of Waukegan employed and working. I thank you for myself, who work here, and I think there are many others out there who appreciate that as well, because that is what keeps our economy going here in Waukegan. So thank you. And I would like to say furthermore on that, is that I heard, I wanted the Aldermen speak, you know, in the area of dealing with principle in voting, it was a matter of principle. And I would like to say, you all did vote on principle. Your first position of principle was when you all created an ordinance that said that you would look out for the best interest of keeping your citizens here employed. And I think, and I feel, you all did vote on the principle and the commitment that you made to the constituents of your ward and this city here, and the people that live within your city. And to our Alderman Beedling, I believe, I think it's the 4th Ward, I think that's what we got there. And, you know, I heard you say on a couple of occasions that you don't feel that government should be involved in contract construction negotiations, private or construction negotiation. And I beg to differ on that, because that's what we put you all in office for, to look out for our best interests. And you, yourself, as a retired union carpenter, who is reaping the benefits of union construction, to want to give a contract to someone who is not here in this city, and from what I understand, is not even a union construction worker. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying there are not people out there who are not qualified construction workers outside of union. There are. One good person coming to mind, if I had to have to work on my house, would be a man by the name of Jake Canard. He do outstanding work. He's not union. But I would like to say that as one who has been in the union, if you want to first find out, I would think your first question would be, was to find out if he was in the union or not. So for the sake of time, I would really hope that in the best interest in the future, that when we're looking out for the best interests of our citizens, when you are someone who have reaped the benefits of construction, and to say that we should not be, that the government should not be involved, sir, you're totally wrong. You're totally wrong, because that's what we let you all for, to look out for our best interests and make sure we work.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Calvin Mathis. Mr. Mathis, and name and address, if you would, please, sir.
My name is Calvin Mathis. I live at 528 Leath Avenue. Right on cue, I want to follow up with Brother Blanks. I just want to comment, commend the City Council on a good decision last week also. It was a heated debate, and I thought it was a little bit too heated for such a, I thought, kind of, basic decision, because we are taxpayers here in Waukegan, and I think it served the city's best interests also to keep any tax dollars you can within the city. I understand that you had an agreement. I understand both sides of the debate, as you all articulated very well. And I think Alderman Tempest, he touched on it a little bit about the money, as if you sent, if you sent the contract to Arlington Heights, well, that $170, well, it was $80,000, goes to Arlington Heights. It doesn't go to Waukegan or Zion Bank. Those are the basic things, and I just want to commend you also on that. And I know Alderman Cunningham always talks about this, and sometimes he's very passionate, and I can see where, you know, he may come just a little bit too aggressive, but that's fine, because he cares. I think all of you care, and I just want to commend you on such a good decision. There's some other things I wanted to talk about, but I thought about, I've been getting a lot of flyers about the election coming up, and I thought we all just save the next comments I have for the next meeting. I know we're going to have a good debate for the candidate for mayor, and for the mayor tomorrow at Jesus Name Church. I think that's right. And I plan on being there, and I just want to wish both of you the best of luck. And Mayor, if it doesn't work out for you, I think you've been doing a good job personally. And if Alderman, I mean, if the city clerk wins, I think he'll do just as good a job. So I just want to commend you on that, and in the next meeting, hopefully, I'll follow up on what I started to say.
Next, we have Violet Ricker.
Good evening. My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 32 North Genesee Street, and I'm also the Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street, our downtown development nonprofit. I want to just again thank Jane Waller and Teddy Anderson, and everybody who worked so hard on the Art Space project. It has been so much fun to meet the new residents who are coming into Art Space and to welcome them, and we already have a lot of them volunteering with Main Street, so that's been really great for us. Been watching them shop in all of our downtown businesses, and it's making a big impact already. I just have two upcoming events I want to make everybody aware of. The first, thanks Calvin for bringing this up, tomorrow night, Main Street is co-hosting a mayoral candidates forum with NAACP of Lake County and NAACP of Lake County and Latino Coalition. And so we'd like to invite everybody to that. That's at Jesus Name Apostolic Church in downtown Waukegan, tomorrow from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the details of that are on our website, waukegammainstreet.org. And I'd also like to let you know that one of our downtown theaters, Clockwise Theater, has a new play coming out. It starts April 19th. It's called "Party in the Kitchen," and it's an original play by Madeline Seargle. And they're actually offering a special deal for city employees and township employees. If anybody's interested in coming to a preview of that show on Thursday, April 18th, at 8:00 p.m., that show is complimentary to any city or township employees who'd like to come check that out. Everybody else can go to their website, clockwisetheater.org, for information about how they can get tickets. Thanks very much.
Next, we have Mr. Ron Osterlein.
Hello. My name's Ron Osterlein. I live at 674 Momon Avenue in Lake Bluff, and I'm also the Executive Director for the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to give an update on some events we have coming up, as well as some, a couple accomplishments, milestones that we've reached. First off, we just passed our 200 membership members in January, and we continue to grow, and our membership is growing. We're really excited to continue to grow. And one of our missions is to really help promote different businesses within, you know, within Waukegan and outside Waukegan. And we really do a good job of helping people refer each other and use each other as businesses. One of our monthly events is on the second Thursday of every month, we have a business after hours. And our next one is being hosted by the College of Lake County at the Puerto Rican Society on Sheridan Road. On the second Thursday of the month, our business after hours, we move those around. Our last one was at the Toyota, classic Toyota on Green Bay. So we have a lot of fun, you know, again, going all different parts of Waukegan, trying to let people know all the different parts of Waukegan, and been really successful with that. Our quarterly breakfast is on May 22nd at Midlane Country Club. It's one of our newest members, and that'll be at 7:30 a.m. It's our, like I said, our quarterly breakfast. Our last one was with Mike Nearheim at Bonnybrook, which was very successful, and we really enjoyed a lot of you coming out there. One thing that we're doing a little differently, or we just started, is we added a new category. In the past, only businesses or organizations of Waukegan or the surrounding Waukegan areas could join the chamber, but we have a new category, and it's called Friends of the Chamber. And basically, anyone that lives in Waukegan can join the chamber and be involved with our events and help us promote Waukegan. So that's something I just want to let people of Waukegan know about. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. That concludes audience time. Now, I would like to take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Beedling, to approve the minutes of March 18th, 2013, the regular meeting and executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Now, we move on to resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. Item A, Mr. Clerk.
This is a proclamation for Bravo Waukegan Day, April 25th, 2013. Whereas the city of Waukegan recognizes that a quality music program is important to community well-being, and whereas Bravo Waukegan supports the music program of the Waukegan Public Schools, and in addition, offers instrumental, instrument procurement, summer music training, and culture enrichment opportunities. And whereas Bravo Waukegan believes that studying music promotes self-discipline, group cooperation, self-esteem, and academic achievement. And whereas Bravo Waukegan is currently developing music enrichment projects that will enable Waukegan children to share more fully in the rich and diverse music of this area. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanjin and members of the City Council of the city of Waukegan do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 25th, Bravo Waukegan Day, and extends Bravo Waukegan their deep appreciation for their distinguished service in this project, and acknowledge their dedication and commitment to the growth of music in our community. Further be resolved that assuming boss copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the members of Bravo Waukegan, dated this first day of April 2013.
Do we have any members here today? Do we have any members representing Bravo? No?
No.
Okay. Well, we'll make sure this gets to them.
The second proclamation is, whereas the city of Waukegan and kids of Lake County embrace the core values of cherishing children, supporting families, and building strong communities, and whereas today's society is plagued with problems which threaten the protection of our children, the status of our families, and the stability of our communities, and whereas the effect of these problems are felt by whole communities and need to be addressed by the entire community, and whereas Lake County has dedicated individuals, businesses, civic groups, and social service organizations that are committed to improving life for the citizens of Waukegan. Whereas community sponsors are successful when there is a partnership with the groups and schools, law enforcement agencies, child protection workers, and faith-based institutions. Whereas Blue Kids Lake County enhances life in the city of Waukegan and all Lake County cities through a campaign focused on child abuse prevention, awareness, education, engagement, and participation during National Child Abuse Awareness Month. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the City Council of the city of Waukegan do hereby recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and proclaim the month of April to be Blue Kids Lake County Month.
That's great. Do we have anybody here for that organization tonight? There we, thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of Blue Kids Lake County, I'd like to thank Mayor Sabanjin and the City Council for this proclamation. As the clerk stated in reading the proclamation, this is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Blue Kids Lake County is a child abuse awareness and prevention program. The campaign was the brainchild of Laura Knottson, the Executive Director of the Lake County Children's Advocacy Center, and Sally Foster of the Family Violence Coordinating Council. It kicked off last year, and we now have many social service agencies that have joined in the efforts, agencies who embrace the core values of Blue Kids Lake County, which is cherishing children, supporting families, and building strong communities. The Blue Kids signs over here in front, you may have seen throughout the county last year in April. The idea is, first of all, to get people wondering, what on earth are those signs about? And hopefully, by piquing your curiosity, you'll visit the website, which provides individuals and families with information on how you go about raising your children, information for when you run into some of the problems and bumps in the road that can help give you guidance and support, direct you to social service agencies right- help give you guidance and support, direct you to social service agencies right here in Lake County, which address those issues. So awareness is the first and foremost, the idea. Going beyond that, providing education, providing engagement, having dialogue, because the best way to prevent child abuse and to protect our children is to get everyone to understand that whether or not you have children, the prevention of child abuse is everybody's responsibility. And so the idea of Blue Kids Lake County is to get businesses, individuals, social service agencies, all participating, displaying signs, the Blue Kids signs, in your home, in your business, having bookmarks that have information on positive parenting tips that are available if you own a business for your customers, that you can share with your family members. And then continuing this dialogue, not just in April, but all throughout the year, so that we encourage everyone to support families, support children, so that our communities can be stronger. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, before you leave, you can purchase those Blue.
Yes, you can, I do have order forms.
There you go.
Yeah, you'll see those popping up around our fire stations, the public works, the police department has one. We purchased a number of them and I, and I do owe them actually a check. So Charlotte, you're not the only one who didn't get their check, but we will get you the, we'll get this paid for in the next couple of days. So thank you for all the hard work that you put into this. It is important, the work that you do, because children who are beaten quite often tend to be, grow up to have some violent tendencies themselves. And we really do need, as a society, to address this because we're violent enough as it is. We don't, we don't need young children being abused and then brought up to just become part of the culture. So thank you very much for everything that you're doing. Next, item C, would like to take a motion, if I might, by Alderman Bedling, seconded by Alderman May, to reappoint Homer Benavides to the Waukegan Port Authority Board. Do we have any comments or questions regarding the reappointment?
Would you like to hold that matter over?
May I ask you why, Alderman?
I, oh, it's very easy. Number one, you have two Aldermen short. Number three, number, we possibly have a new mayor in another few weeks, and possibly that's a very important appointment coming up. I think our courtesy to yourself or whoever may be elected, that appointment should go through them. And that's my concern. And I think it's realistic and it's not asking too much to hold off. They may come up with the same names, I'm sure, one they probably will. But to be consistent, I think holding this over to the mayoral election is over, is prudent and wise, and that's why I'm asking it to be held over.
Okay, as you request, that is being held over. I'd like to take a motion by, again, if I might, Alderman Bedling, seconded by Alderman May, to make the new appointment of Diane Verratti to the Waukegan Port Authority Board. Do you have any comments or questions?
I'd like to hold that over for the same reason.
Okay, so we have both of those appointments are being held over. I will state right now that I am making a thirty-day appointment on both of these appointments, so that they may begin to fill those needed spaces and begin to get up to speed on the work of those boards. If I'm reelected, we'll either bring it back to you or I'll make the next thirty or sixty day appointment, and hopefully we'll be able to get everybody comfortable with the two appointments. Item D, we have before us the appointment of.
Mayor, if I may comment on your comment.
Alderman, Alderman Tempest.
Be so kind.
Point of order, please.
A point of order in your.
Point of order, sir, please.
To comment since, since you are commenting, I think I should have the right to comment back.
Alderman, please, point of order, sir.
And my comment back.
Point of order, sir.
Is that, you know, if you really feel so strongly this way.
Alderman, please, you didn't even ask to be recognized.
You're gonna start thirty-day appointments, you are sending a bad signal to your council.
Okay.
For anything, you reaching your arm out.
Thank you, Alderman. Item D, appoint DeMar Harris to the Waukegan Housing Authority. Take a motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Bedling, to make the appointment. Do we have any comments or questions on item D?
I do, Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman Cunningham.
I had an opportunity to, to speak with the chairman of the board of the Waukegan Housing Authority. And I did explain to her that similar to what Alderman Tempest has said earlier, I think it is a wise deal, and I've been an Alderman over twelve years. It has always been customary that we hold off all business from the City of Waukegan until these matters of who the next leader is going to be in our, for our city. I don't know what you're accustomed to, I know you came from the county, that might have a different effect, but from the City of Waukegan, and being unified upon this council, as a freshman Alderman to now a senior ranking Alderman, I think it is wise that we all move forward and just hold off on these appointments. I understand, and I think it's good, good thinking on your behalf of trying to get those individuals that you have appointed. I think if you take a look at all of your appointments, you have seen that we have been consistently approving all of your appointments. So I don't think it is a matter of us not approving or not agreeing with you, I think it's a matter of, from consistency standpoint, and just a matter of respect for the chair and being the leader. So I'm asking you, Your Honor, as the leader of our city, allow this process to move forward and not be an adversary, not only to the council, but to the citizens of this great community, and more importantly, to the young men and women that you have asked to be a part of our organization. So I'm asking for this particular appointment to be held over, for that reason, that reason only, and I will might add, I know that you, you have a lot of hands throughout this city, but on this particular appointment, as you probably do with others, with me having six, seven years as a former Waukegan Housing Authority Commissioner, it would have been real nice for you to reach out and say, Alderman, what is your opinion? Particularly if that is, the vast majority of that housing stock lies in the first ward. But you've, you've shared your opinion on that in the past, I understand that, but I truly believe in working with you, and have said that to you in the past. I think, Mayor, you should hold off on these appointments until after you and Mr. Motley have gone through the process where the people of this community have chosen the new leader. That is my opinion, because that's kind of what I'm used to, not saying, being the past, we should continue on with the past, but if it is working, it is successful, and it brings harmony amongst what we're trying to do, I don't see any reason to change that right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, I appreciate your comments. Actually, the request to move this appointment forward has come from members of the Waukegan Housing Authority. I have discussed this appointment with the clerk, who has been involved with the Waukegan Housing Authority for quite a while. I have not heard any negatives in regards to this individual gentleman, actually, who's lives in my neighborhood. His resume is stellar, his ability to serve this community, I think, will go unquestioned. And they need him on the Housing Authority Board quickly to begin to get up to speed and begin to do the work necessary. So while I respect your request, Alderman, I do feel that, so that the Housing Authority can move forward with doing its work, that I will make a thirty-day appointment regarding that. And I would like to comment, if I might, just very briefly, in regards to late-term appointments. When I was sworn in, that night, the appointment of the new police chief was made. They asked me if I wanted to hold it over, was I in opposition to Chief Artist Yancy? And I felt that it was in the best interest of the community, the best interest of coming in and working with all the individuals involved in city government, that appointment moved forward. So I took the recommendation of this, the members of the City Council, as well as members of the community, who said that that was a solid appointment, and I stood with it. I don't see why these appointments should be treated any differently. So, as I said, this evening, I believe it is my duty to continue to do my job as mayor of the City of Waukegan, regardless of where we stand in the elections, whether I had already lost or already won. I will make the thirty-day appointment, because I believe this gentleman is the best person for the job. Next, we move on to committee reports and motions. Judiciary Committee Report, Alderman May, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met on March twenty-fifth. We only have one item this evening, and it has to do with a subdivision, which is actually a follow-up of a earlier CUP that we issued in September of two thousand and eleven. It's a subdividing a large lot off of Apple in the ninth ward. Although Alderman Rivera is not in attendance tonight, he did relay to me that he does support this particular measure. So with that, I would say that the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the preliminary and final plat of the Greenway subdivision located at three zero five one Apple Avenue, along with the ordinance as presented, which is zoning calendar number two-three-eight-six in ISO MOOF.
We have the motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next, we move to old business. At the last meeting, a motion was made by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to adopt as presented an ordinance adopting a new investment policy for the City of Waukegan. Alderman Tempest made the request that it be held over.
Because I did not have the policy in front of me. I've read it, I want to compliment Dr. Schwab, what a nice job they've done, but I do not like to vote on something that I have not read. And again, Dr. Schwab, you did an excellent job, and I thank you for the time you put in on it.
Are we prepared?
A lot of the credit is due to the deputy, Deputy Treasurer, Cindy T. Camp. She's spent a lot of time going up with the new, the new state regulations and then just filling in our name as the city.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, we appreciate your comment. Do we have any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Alderman Cunningham, I apologize.
I noticed we have First Midwest Bank, we have North States Bank, North Shore Trust and Savings, and US Bank. Can I ask, US Bank, is that the one out in Fulton Square, if I'm not mistaken?
No.
No.
In Springfield, Illinois?
They, they handle our e-pay, electronic, our electronic pay.
Okay, I, I guess I'm a little confused. If I'm not mistaken, and Doc, and I do apologize, I should have looked at those names before, because I know you mentioned them, but they handle our e-pay, but I thought First Midwest Bank and North States can handle that as well.
Dr. Schwab, if you would like to answer Alderman Cunningham's question.
That's who we've, that's who we've been using in the past, and that's where, that's where we have a connection. We also have some of the stuff, e-pay or electronic paying, through First, First Midwest Bank. So this is, this is something we've had for a long, long time. It was here when I came. It's not something we've started.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Alderman Cunningham, any further comments on that, sir? Do you have any other comments? Seeing none, roll call on that, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. That concludes the old business, we have no reports and communications. Now onto new business, recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Bedling, for the approval of payroll dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated April first, two thousand and thirteen, in the amount of one million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and twelve cents. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Bedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Item C, approval of the annual appropriation ordinance of the City of Waukegan, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand and thirteen, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Do we have any comments or questions?
Would you like to hold that over?
Yes, Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to hold that over.
Alderman Tempest has requested that be held over, okay. That will be brought up at the next City Council meeting, thank you. Item D, an ordinance amending chapter twenty of the city code of the City of Waukegan, increasing the city's hotel or motel occupancy task. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Do we have any comments or questions?
Your Honor, can, I have a question.
Yes, Alderman Cunningham.
Can, you know, I'm gonna move to hold this over as well.
As you wish. The item will be brought back to the next meeting. That concludes new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. We have no ordinances or resolutions before us. We now move into Alderman's time, which will follow by executive session. So after the closing of the Alderman's comments, the meeting is for all intents purposes concluded. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
You know, I, I, I guess I have a question, not a question, this is a comment. Earlier, Your Honor, you had mentioned that there was no money for roads, there was no money for this, there was no money for that, because when you first came in, the city was in financial dire straits, and we're gonna bring a bankruptcy. I totally disagree with that, but that is your assessment. And then today, you mentioned that we don't have any money for roads, because we didn't do the, the, the tax rate where you want it to be. The corporate tax rate. But I find it very funny, I shouldn't say funny, that's not, I'm being, that's, that's a bad term. I find it very, you know, very curious, as we want to increase the hotel, motel occupancy tax, and that is to fund more bodies. Well, if we're looking to increase a tax to bring more bodies in, why can't we increase that tax to go with our, improving our roads and our sidewalks? So I'm a little, you know, a little lost on that. Before we can move forward, I think, in bringing in more bodies to a city government, I'd like to take a page out of your book and say, let's continue with this cleaning up process of, of City Hall or other departments. To increase, and as a matter of fact, who did the survey on this? Where is the details about all this? I mean, I didn't see that, I know it's part of your appropriations, but I'm, I'm not a fan of moving this just to bring in more bodies. I think that we can shift around, reorganize our organization in order to, to get the bodies needed to fulfill those positions. That's my personal opinion. And I think, as we move forward in our debates with, with our budget and our appropriations regards of whom's here, I don't see the need to rush to this aspect when you have already said, there is no more money. Now, you can't take money to increase the tax and not put it where there's the need assessments, per you now, this is per you. You said, if I'm not mistaken, that we don't have money to do roads, sidewalks, capital improvements, but you're gonna increase the tax to bring in more bodies. If I'm gonna increase the tax, I would tell the taxpayers in the City of Waukegan, we're using that money to fulfill. we're using that money to fulfill the need of our community. I think we have some of the brightest people on the face of earth that are employed with the city, and they have been doing an outstanding job of doing the things that's necessary to move the organization, to add more bodies to that from a tax when I know, and this is per you, I know that there is a need assessment of roads, of sidewalks, capital improvements. Let's fulfill that first, and then backfield with this other. So unless I have a clear or better understanding of why we're going to take this money to bring in more, and we still need money to do roads and sidewalks, that I'm going to have to go back and ask the public for in the near future. So that's one of my reasons for holding that over. And those are my comments for today, thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that next week, April ninth, two thousand and thirteen, Tuesday, is Election Day. I know that everybody feels it's very important to vote for the president, senators, state representatives, what have you, and there's usually a big turnout in November. But I'd like to remind everybody is that the people that you're going to elect next week have a bigger impact on your lives than any of those people that you voted for in November. They're the ones that affect your lives here, they're the ones that run your cities, they're the ones that run your park districts, your school boards. So please, everybody, get out and vote next week, Tuesday. Those are any of my comments, and good luck to all the candidates, those are any of my comments, thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
A couple of things, biggie back on Alderman Cunningham, early voter, Alderman Conkin, early voting, I think was enacted to try to increase the turnout of people and try to make it easier for people to vote. The only problem with our system is it's a county building, and it's not easy to come to the county building and have to pay for parking and have to park and do all that. So it's not easy for people. I think the county clerk has to figure a better way to get, they used to have it at the Field House, which was a much, probably, better place to have it. I understand staffing needs and all that, but there's only two people there, I don't think it's that hard to do, this is something I'm throwing out there. It's hard to, for people to come down here to early vote. There's nowhere to park, or they have to pay for park, people aren't going to do that to vote, they're just not going to do it. If you had it somewhere else, like the Field House they had it at, or somewhere, people could come where it was much more convenient, I think that would increase voter turnout, that's always, I always talk about the voter turnout being low. Well, because early voting's not doing its purpose, it's not being convenient, it's more of a hassle than it is, than it is a convenience for people. So I think that needs to be addressed, obviously not with this body, but with the geniuses across the street. Second, art space. I think that is a major accomplishment. I was chairman of the Economic Development Committee, I think we had one meeting, and that was to sell art space. And my comments at that time were, why wouldn't we support somebody that's undefeated? They've never lost. They've never not delivered, and they've delivered. So I think sometimes, being a leader or being an elected official, it's just like being a good coach, is get talent and get out of the way. Don't be an obstructionist, let them do their job. So I think, as the city council, we did that, is, it took a little selling by a few council members, hey, let's go with this, I know this is a lot of money, I know we're taking a little bit of a gamble, but we're gambling on an undefeated product. And we did it, we got out of the way, and look what happened. I think that's what government's supposed to do. Give people the opportunity, get talent, and get out of the way. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
Regarding bidding, I came from the private sector, perhaps I'm a little naive, I read newspapers, a lot of news in Chicago, bid rigging and things like that, illegal things. And I just, I guess I assume that when you ask for bids on something, and you ask for the lowest qualified bidder, that's in fact what you're asking for. Maybe I am naive, I don't know. But the next day, I checked things out myself. The next day, I took a ride over to Whittier School, project that Stukey Construction is doing, for the express purpose of going through the parking lot to see, to look for city stickers on cars. I found one car in the lot with a Waukegan city sticker. The rest of them had either no city sticker or a city sticker from another community. Keeping money in the community, well, I don't think Mr. Stukey even lives in Waukegan. He has a place of business here, he pays taxes, like any other business in Waukegan does. I'm a union, I am still a union carpenter, I have not retired yet, probably not going back to work, but I'm probably one of only maybe a half a dozen that live in Waukegan. We have some laborers here, I can't give you a number on that, but I do know there are very few union carpenters that live in Waukegan. I have another issue. For the Treasurer, in a piece of literature, he says that he saved the city millions of dollars refinancing the bonds. I'd like to ask the Treasurer what exactly his role in that was.
Don't answer, don't answer, don't answer.
Alderman, why don't we just direct our comments to the audience for tonight?
Okay, well, I don't appreciate, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. I'm done.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Silas Herndon that passed away last week. He was a former director of the Staben Center, now is named the Eddie Washington Center. I'd like to offer condolences to his wife, Tina, and the rest of his family. I understand the memorial service is going to be this Saturday at ten a.m. at Sign of the Dove, which is on Tenth Street. And second, I would like to do an update on the city's website. We started this process last year in May, and now the website is complete. We'll start some training from Civic Plus next week. There'll be three days that the staff will come to help our staff service this website. The new website will be fully ADA compliant, will serve as one of our primary marketing tools for economic development, will help facilitate a new branding effort for Waukegan. There'll be fifteen staff that'll be working on this from every department, and there'll be a key person that will do the upkeep of their department. And I want to pass, this is the, what the city's website will look like. And we want to make doing business in Waukegan even easier. This will be done twenty-four, seven days a week, Monday through Friday. Business will be able to be done online, forms and applications can be filed, can pay online any time of the day or night. And I just want to thank Dave Motley, and I was a part of the Executive Committee on this, they did a lot, and Noel Kisher did a lot of hard work on this, and the website looks good, did an excellent job, thank you.
Alderman Tempest, thank you.
First, I'd like to compliment all those that worked on art space. I remember flying up to Minnesota years ago to check it out. I remember coming down to a final vote here on the council, and I felt myself, it was a lot of money, but I said, well, we're halfway there. I said, we're half, half, half-pregnant, I think, I said, and I said, we've got to go through with it, we can't abort this project at this time, we've got too much investment. And wow, I remember when Bill Morris took that same building over and made it Armors of Oak Park, it was an old folks' home, we had the restaurant down in the basement, and it was quite a going concern until they had the fire. And then the building went into disarray for a long, long time, and finally been revived, and boy, what a feather in everybody's cap. We have a mortgage on there, but I'm sure that's going to do a lot to make Waukegan better. Next point, the city sticker. If you remember, last year, it kind of went long ways, and I suggested maybe turn it like this, so the police could see it better, because they looked so much alike. Well, someone, somewhere in the city did a better job. They made an egg shape out of it, an oval, so much easier to see. Who did that? Congratulations to...
I'm so proud of you.
Well, that was a great, I came up with the idea maybe, but that was even better, you know, with the circle, so maybe next year we'll go back to a square or something, you know, so it's easier for the officers. We need, and when's the date that was going to be bought by, Your Honor?
April third.
When's?
There's one month, one month left.
One month left?
Yes.
Well, they better get moving.
Come now, don't all wait till the end.
That's what I'm saying.
Because the line goes right out the door, and it takes forever.
And does the price go up too?
It does go up, yes, and then, but we also give a small grace period for enforcement, but yes, please come tomorrow.
Please, please get your sticker bought, I hate to see you pay a fine. And I noticed in my area, there's quite a few ain't bought yet, so maybe I'll write you a note. Okay, the city sticker I talked about, oh, holding over things tonight. You know, Mayor, don't take it wrong, keep the olive branch out there. You know, you have some Alderman that felt maybe Motley could do a little better, but you've done a good job the last six months, I've got to compliment you there. Some of us have chosen what we thought, but you know, you've got to learn, been around as long as I have, politics makes strange bed partners. And if it's for the better of Waukegan, and everybody believes it, we're all going to work together for a better Waukegan. Motley wants a better Waukegan, I'm sure you want a better Waukegan. So we need to work together. To hold up on the things tonight, the appropriation ordinance, a new mayor may want to look at things a little differently, hold the olive branch out there, what difference does it make? If you're elected, you're going to get what you want. If he's elected, he may have a little changes he may want to make in the appropriation ordinance. I can't remember, I remember sitting here right to the last moment to pass the appropriation, and it wasn't show and tell, we went line item by line item, and I don't think anybody's done that here yet, but the economic times were in, we need to take a look, line item by line item, to make sure we all understand where the dollars are going. And I don't believe everybody does, even myself. I need that refresher course. And yes, Tina did a good job, she does a wonderful job for us, and I got to compliment her, but comes to money, I've got to have a better understanding. My mother came from Scotland, so that should tell you a little bit about it. Your father called me Scotty for a reason, your dear dad, what a friend. Okay, what else did I want to talk about? Well, oh, people, the city looks bad right now, but please don't get angry with us, it's that time of year, the snow's all melted, everything's debris along the curbs, it's going to take a while for the street sweeper's to get out, to clean it all up, going to take a little while for the branches to be picked up on the curb and the raking of the lawns, but the city will look good again in a month or so. And it's this time of year, things look dreary until we get it cleaned up, and that's from the long winter we've had. So with that, I hope you don't get so upset that I held some of those things over, but I just felt that, whoever elected mayor, May first, probably be some of the same appointments. And I don't think making a thirty day appointment was the wisest decision, because I think it delineates your council somewhat, although the people you chose, I can't say they're bad people, I can't say they can't do the job. I have some concerns about the Port District, where we're going there, we've got an airport, people with aviation experience, we've got the Yacht Club with yachting experience, we've got the harbor filling in that we're going to get taken care of this year, but where are we in the future? And that can be the future of Waukegan, our airport and our port here. Tremendous access that we have, tremendous asset that we have for the city of Waukegan. And with that, I wish you all the best for the coming week, and hope everybody gets out to vote, and vote your conscience. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I just have a few comments this evening. I do want to address the hotel motel sales tax, which was held over this evening, and just voiced my support for it. We, a lot of us realize, and I think agree up here on the council, that we have a void in economic development in this city, we don't have anyone who's dedicated to economic development or working towards those efforts. It's been explained to us that this, the increase in the hotel motel sales tax would be, these funds would be used directly to fund an economic development director and staff, I think it's two and a half people, and I think that would be good use of those funds. I do understand our roads are crumbling, don't think that they, we aren't going to address roads, we do get motor fuel tax, we will be fixing our roads and sidewalks to the best of our ability, but at some point, we do have to address economic development in the city, which will bring tax dollars, so that we can do all the things that we need to do. I won't belabor that point. I want to say thanks to Senator Dick Durbin and Congressman Brad Schneider for securing almost a million dollars in relief funds from the Army Corps of Engineers. They're going, they're going to address the shelling that was caused by Hurricane Sandy in our harbor, which hopefully will open up navigation to our commercial freights down at the harbor. My next item is, if you've been to City Hall over the past several months, you may have noticed that there is once again a friendly face at our entrance desk. What you may not know is that these kind folks are volunteers who are providing a great service to those who visit City Hall. I'd like to thank our greeters, Maria, Mimi Templeman, Barbara Simpson, and Mitch Siegel, for giving their time and energy to everyone who visits City Hall. You all are providing a higher level of customer service to our residents and business owners that we serve here. Finally, I'd like to recognize our Seventh Ward Neighborhood Officer Laney Newman, Sergeant Corey Kelly, and the entire Neighborhood Policing Unit for coming out on a chilly Friday afternoon and spending time with the residents of Harbor Lakes Apartments in the Seventh Ward. I'd also like to commend the management and staff of Harbor Lakes for their participation and partnership on this community event. There are close to four hundred units in this residential complex situated between Little Fort Elementary and Jack Benny Middle School. We had the mobile substation out there, and the officers provided fingerprint identification records for the children who stopped by to visit with their parents. There were treats for the kids and a chance for positive interaction with our men and women in blue. I was happy to be on hand to meet the residents, and I'm thankful for this opportunity. I'm a big fan of proactive community outreach, and can't thank Laney enough for heading up this effort. I'm told Officer Bega held a similar event in the following, excuse me, the following week at a large complex in the Second Ward. Sergeant Kelly heads up the Neighborhood Policing Unit, which is a vital component in keeping our neighborhoods safe and fostering an environment of open communication between the residents and the Waukegan Police Department. Thanks a bunch to everyone involved, and thanks to Chief Greathouse for his support of this very important unit. And that's all I have.
Thank you, and I do want to mention on the passing of Silas Herndon, Silas was a good friend of mine, I worked with him actually quite a bit off and on at the facility on McAllister Street, the Staben Center. And I used to do a lot of their public relations and photography and video work for them, because I felt it was an important organization, but I also enjoyed working with Silas. I'd known the family a long time, I grew up on McAllister Street, I was friends with the family for a number of years, and hearing his passing this morning was actually very heartbreaking, because this was one of the nicest, sweetest individuals you would ever want to meet, and he made a difference in hundreds of lives of men who were floundering, were struggling for a path, and Silas gave them a hand up and helped them make themselves into something better and to be part of a better community. So I just want to have everybody remember the family in your thoughts and prayers over the next few days, and know that Waukegan has lost a great resource. Silas was a great person, and I cared greatly for him, and I will miss him. We will have an executive session, as I said, the meeting is essentially finished. Motion to go in executive session by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Tempest, all in favor, pardon me, for matters pertaining to real estate negotiations, settlement of claims, and pending litigation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. Ayes have it. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Okay, now, motion to go back into regular session by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Good night, everybody.